Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 10th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grolhan, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes...
Cardenas Garcetti, Grolhan Labange, Ludlow, Ms. Kowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Varegosa, Weiss, Sein, Padilla, thirteen members present and aquorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Members of the council and members of the public, this is Tuesday, the first meeting of the week. It is our custom to have our salute to the flag. Let me ask Councilmember Parks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Here. Would everyone rise, please face the flag, United States of America. Put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And colleagues, an important announcement before we begin with today's proceedings. Some of you might have heard or watched the news prior to coming into council chambers. The LAPD is reporting a hostage situation, armed hostage situation underway at the Mexican consulate in Mr. Reyes's district near the MacArthur Park area of the city of Los Angeles. So while we pray for the men and women of law enforcement and those hostages that have been taken, we hope that the situation is resolved peacefully, we also ask members of the public to please stay clear of that area, try not to drive through that area. Police is going to need the breathing space to do what they do best, and we'll keep you posted as we hear developments. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. President, I'd just like to indulge for about ten seconds and apologize to the community and the council. I'd like to apologize for keeping Cindy Msakowski and Ms. Han late in the committee, but the fact of the matter is, we had some very important issues, not more important than anything else. I just wanted to say that was the reason why we were late. We do apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
......
All right. Madam Clerk, first to order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves, and Ms. Sein, seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Ms. Msakowski, seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And let's recognize that I do not have speaker cards under general public comment today. General public comment is open and closed. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District Four. A motion is required to grant the application.
Members, item number one is now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item number one. Public hearing is open and closed. Do we have a motion on item number one? If not, let's hold that on the desk. Okay, item one called special by Mr. Varegosa.
Next items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through thirty-five. Item number two is confirmation of city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk. Members, items two through thirty-five now before us. Public hearings on these items have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings.
And, Mr. President, there is also a request on items thirty-three and thirty-four to continue those matters for thirty days, and the new date would be December 10th.
Any objection to continuing items thirty-three and thirty-four? Seeing none, those items are continued. On the balance of items two through thirty-five, members, do we have any specials?
Seven is amended, please.
Do we have an amending motion that's been circulated?
Yes, I believe so.
Or is that coming around?
It's in the process of being distributed.
Okay, let's hold that temporarily on the desk until that amending motion is circulated. Any other specials on items two through thirty-five? Ms. Perry.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, called special by Ms. Perry.
And, Mr. President, there are several items that have multiple reports, and motions would be required on those.
Okay. Ms. Sein?
Yes, regarding the items with more than one report, item number five, we request we move actually both. The Housing Community Economic Development Committee report and Personnel Committee report. Move both of those reports. They're not in conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And item number thirty-five, request that we move the personnel and the budget reports and receive and file Public Works and the Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee reports.
Okay, we have a motion, item thirty-five. We have a motion, item five, but I believe Mr. Garcetti wants to call that special. So so far, two's held on the desk, five is called special, thirteen is called special. Any other specials? Thirty-three and thirty-four have been continued. If there are no other requests for specials...
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for clarification, item number five was called special by Council member Garcetti?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no other request for specials, let's open the roll and the balance of the items. Item seven, we're considering as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items thirty-six through fifty-one. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Thirty-six through fifty-one now before us, without objection. Members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Any specials? Ms. Msakowski.
Fifty and fifty-one for a minor technical amendment. We'll have the motion to be circulated shortly, and item fifty-two.
Okay, item fifty-two called special by Ms. Msakowski. Fifteen, fifty-one, as we await an amending motion. Any other specials? Mr. Cardenas?
Item forty-four.
Forty-four, called special by Mr. Cardenas. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Fifty-two has been called special by Ms. Msakowski. Fourth with, please, on item fourteen. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, are items for which, on the supplemental agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held, item fifty-three through fifty-six. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Again, without objection, these items are before the City Council today, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed on items fifty-three through fifty-six. Any specials? Members, any specials on fifty-three through fifty-six? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
And also, just to let council know, on item number fifty-six, there is an instruction for the city attorney to prepare an ordinance. That ordinance has been prepared and will be on the continuation agenda on Friday.
Okay, I believe that's the end of our agenda. We now come back to items called special. I've had a request by Mr. Garcetti to take item five out of order. We'll take item five next.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would move, if there's not an objection, to a short five-minute hearing. We've got a number of folks who've been part of coalition today for this anti-sweatshop ordinance that I think is going to make history, so if there's no objection, I'd ask for a bouncum of time to be held and then move for a five-minute hearing.
Okay, any objection? If not, then we do have quite a number of cards on item five. So let's set up a clock, and I'll call forward at this time. Hey, Tom Hayden is here. Tom Hayden, followed by Reverend Robert Miller, Christina Vasquez, Susie Shannon, and Guadalupe Hernandez. Would you please come forward and form a line at the podium, please?
Mr. President, councilmembers, thank you very much. I will speak just for a moment in support of Mr. Garcetti's motion and the hard work, excellent work that he has done to bring this ordinance before you. It stems from the idea that our tax dollars should not go to sweatshop contractors or subcontractors, that government and the taxpayers can play a role in improving working conditions. The city of Los Angeles has already shown that with its living wage ordinance. This would be a step to bolstering the enforcement capacity and the monitoring capacity so that the city can find out if any of the goods, garments, and wherewithal procured by the city with tax dollars are made in sweatshops in this city, or in the state, or anywhere in the world, and there's an independent monitor and a mechanism for trying to redress the problem. It's been two years in the making, and it's been a good two years because the result is a is an ordinance that I think you all can be proud of, and I urge an "I" vote. And particularly want to thank the councilmen and members of the Unite and other garment workers organizations who are here, as well as the clergy who have stayed with this issue all this time. Thank you very, very much.
Before, let me hold the clock here for the public speakers. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to my friend, Mr. Hayden, it is it is great to see you. It's great to see you well and vigorous and fighting the good fight, and you taught you taught me a great deal before we ever met, and then you taught me a great deal while we while we did meet and worked together, and I'm just it's just a pleasure and privilege for me to see today, and I'm glad to see you're doing so well.
Well, councilman, you're a gracious winner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Good morning. My name is Christina Vasquez. I'm the regional manager of Unite here, and on behalf of the garment workers and union members, I urge this council to pass this No Sweat Ordinance. Our tax dollars should not go to sweatshops. They should go to responsible employers and companies. This could be a great day to remember a victory day for garment workers in the city of Los Angeles who are fighting for decent wages, benefits, and working conditions. Four million dollars per year are spent by the city of L.A. to buy uniforms. Let's make sure that the workers behind those sewing machines that are making those uniforms for our law enforcement earn the living wage. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you very much.
And once again, I'll hold the clock and recognize Mr. Ludlow.
Christina, I just wanted to say thank you so much for your leadership. Colleagues and those who are in the audience, Christina Vasquez's work fighting for the men and women in the labor movement has really, really taken a whole new level of excitement and activism in Los Angeles, and I just want to say, you've been fighting this good fight for quite some time, and it's great to see it come to a head. Christina, thank you so much for your leadership. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Guadalupe Hernandez. Apoyo mucho esta ley porque trabajé por doce años en trabajadores. Soy trabajadora de costura por doce años, y no quiero que también soy una ciudadana de Los Ángeles, y no quiero que mi dinero siga yendo a talleres de explotación.
Hi, good morning. My name is Guadalupe Hernandez. I've been working in this industry for about twelve years. I'm a taxpayer, and I don't want that this my money be used for this type of exploitation.
Y quiero que por favor la firmen porque no quiero que haga más talleres ni aquí ni en otro lado, y ojalá y Los Ángeles sea el comienzo, y después sea en otros lados.
I am a U.S. citizen. I would like this to be the beginning. I don't want any more shops of this sort, not only here in Los Angeles. I hope that we are the leaders, but also in the rest of the world.
Gracias, y les pido que por favor la firmen.
Thank you, and I ask for your approval.
Reverend Robert I. Miller, I realize as I stand before you in my uniform that I'm representing so many folk across the greater Los Angeles area. I've had the privilege to be before two, three of your committees moving us toward this day, and I especially want to thank those members and especially Councilman Eric Garcetti for the work he's done to bring us to this day. Some of you will remember a high day like this a few years ago, when the council voted to have Los Angeles be an outstanding city with a living wage ordinance, and now, today, this can happen again for those way down the ladder of employment but who can benefit so much from what you do. I thank you for this opportunity to represent those who will applaud you in this action. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Susie Shannon, and I'm a member of the No More Sweatshops Coalition. And what I'm holding in my hand, actually, are two city uniforms that I purchased at a local uniform shop which are made in China, and I think you would agree with me that the fact that a city employee could drive four miles south of here and purchase garments that are made in sweatshops is an outrage. Making that connection between human suffering and what we purchase is at the heart of this legislation, and I urge an "I" vote. Thank you so much.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to all the members of the Coalition who are here to testify today. Colleagues, let me start by quoting Julie Butcher, a general manager of SEIU 347. She says, "The only sweat that the city employees," I'm paraphrasing here, "but the only sweat that city employees should have in their uniforms is their own." Today, we have the opportunity to take a bold step, not just here locally, but part of something globally as well, in making sure that the city does not spend its taxpayer dollars on exploiting workers, whether they are down the street from here or whether they are an ocean away. Two years in the making, but certainly decades in the formation, this piece of legislation, this ordinance, would establish the strictest standards in the country, here in the sweatshop capital of the United States, where we are able to not only have accountability locally, but work with human rights groups that are working around the world to make sure that contractors and subcontractors have conditions that allow workers to have dignity and to be able to support their families. I want to thank the CAO's office and the city attorney's office for their hard work on this, Josh Kamenski in my own office as well, Senator Tom Hayden for being the inspiration behind this, and No More Sweatshops, Sweatshop Watch, Unite H.E.R.E., the clergy coalition that is here as well, Erica Zeitlin, I want to thank her too. Essentially, what we do here today is a first step with apparel, but it is a blueprint that we can take for our entire procurement process, to say that we stand, as we have so many times in this city, for dignity for workers, but also that we stand for shared information and doing it not just the right thing, but doing it in a smart way, so that we can begin to have a coalition throughout this country of people sharing information about which apparel manufacturers are the good ones, which ones we should support, whether, again, they are local or whether they are international. I urge your support on this today. I want to thank Mr. Sein for his support and Personnel Committee and all the H.C.E.D. members as well. I hope that we can send a unanimous signal here that this can be done, that when we wonder where our clothes come from, and we wonder what conditions the people whose hands literally put together the threads that we have on our backs live under, that we will rest easier knowing that our employees and each one of the people who work hard in those clothes is also promoting dignity and justice, not just in their own jobs, but through the purchase of properly-made clothes. Thank you, and I thank the Coalition for their great work on this, too.
Ms. Han? Ms. Varegosa?
I want to thank Councilmember Garcetti for your leadership on this issue, Tom Hayden and all of the Coalition members who are here today. Today, we stand up as a city, and we say that we want to reward work, that we want to stand for the idea that when you work, that you should be paid a decent wage, and that we don't want to do a business with those businesses that don't respect that, that don't respect the rights of workers, that don't respect our wage, labor, environmental, and other aspects of a code of conduct that is so important in a city like the city of the angels. So thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, and to all the Coalition, congratulations.
Other members wishing to be heard on the side? Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise and congratulate our dear colleague from the thirteenth, Councilmember Garcetti, who's been vigilant on this case and vigilant on this concept, and also all the members of Housing Community Economic Development Committee who have really been there all along, but most importantly, the members of the Coalition. It's an amazing statement. I know that Julie Butcher is walking the halls here somewhere. SEIU 347 has been very, very supportive. City workers have stood tall on this issue. We want to thank you guys so much for doing the right thing and being a leader on such a progressive cause. This really does give Los Angeles an opportunity, I think, to become the largest city on the planet, to do the right thing with sweat equity, and it's just such an honor. You get a few times in your lifetime to cast a vote on something that you think really is historical, and this is one of those moments. And so while it may not feel controversial here on the floor right now, there isn't that spirited debate. I think it's a compliment to all of the members of the L.A. City Council that they are so far collectively on the right side of this issue, and it's a real tribute to the men and women that have been working on this case for such a long time. So it's a real honor. Congratulations, Eric. Job well done. I'm anxious to cast this "I" vote.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please, on item number five. For which, please, on item number five. Before proceeding to the next item, let me recognize Councilmember Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to ask for reconsideration on item 54. We forgot to do one thing.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Item...reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Item 54 is now back before us. Ms. Han.
Members, I've been told that what we need to do is instruct the city attorney to begin drafting the language for the ballot measure. So, we need to do that. So, I ask that we do that.
Okay. With that amendment, any further discussion? If not, let's reopen the roll on item 54. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number two is a confirmation of Mr. Gerdens Ducky to the Animal Services Department.
And members, just so you know how we're going to flow procedurally this morning, we're going to take item two at this time. Mr. Stuckey, please come forward. Public comment has been held in committee on this item. After this item, and if the committee report is done from this morning's Commerce Committee, we'll take item 52 next. That's confirmation of Ms. Day to the position of Executive Director of Los Angeles World Airports, and then the balance of items called special. So, that's our sequence this morning soon as the Commerce Committee report is done. Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of Public Safety Committee, we did have an extensive hearing on this matter, but I understand there are a lot of cards today, and I think that the council has received a lot of information, both letters and email on this, but it would be appropriate, in the consideration of this matter, to open a limited public hearing. So, I move that we reopen the public hearing to allow testimony, to some limited testimony to be given to the full council on this matter.
Okay. Members, any objection to reopening the public hearing? Seeing none. Ms. Sikowski, what timeframe would you like?
I think a 15-minute public hearing.
Okay, 15-minute public hearing. I'll go with the speaker cards in order they were presented to me. So, Madam Clerk, would you please post a 15-minute clock for public hearing? And for the members of the public who are here to offer comments on item number two, we're going to announce the following process. I'm going to read a series of names from the cards in front of me. I would ask that you please form a line behind the podium in front of us. That's going to expedite the public hearing. There will appear a 15-minute clock over each of my shoulders here, and it's going to be taken. So, we don't have a set timeframe for each individual member speaking. We would ask that you try to keep it to as close to a minute as possible, only to allow as many people who are waiting to speak to actually speak. So, if there's a person up there who's taking up way too much time, that's only going to mean less people speaking at the tail end. All right? Okay. With that, let me call Phyllis Doherty, Scott Sorrentino, Susan Taylor, Diane Scripps, and Gillian Lang, and then I'll call other names as we proceed.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. My name is Phyllis Doherty. I'm with Animal Issues Movement. I'm here to speak in support of your confirmation of Mr. Stuckey. I was on the First Focus Committee, and as I spoke at the Public Safety Committee, I did believe that the general manager strongly needs animal control and law enforcement experience. I gave it a 40% weight. However, I was the only one that felt that way, and judging from the wishes of the other members of that committee, they have selected Mr. Stuckey, who seems to be a very, very qualified candidate for this position. I think we need to give him our full support as he starts this very, very difficult job and continues to lead the department actually forward in the wonderful path that's been started by Sharon Morris and Regina Adams.
My name is Scott Sorrentino, and I'm the co-founder of the Rescue and Humane Alliance Los Angeles, which is a coalition of more than 40 legitimate, hard-working rescue organizations advocating for animals in Los Angeles. There are approximately 50 adoption partner groups that work directly with the city, rescuing animals from city shelters. Only one of those organizations was consulted in any part of this selection process. If there is no divide between the humane community and the Department of Animal Services, then why have you all been getting letters and phone calls and emails and faxes all week and previous week? If there is a divide between the humane community and the department, then why isn't the city doing more about it? Why isn't the city reaching out to this community and trying to repair the damage of the last couple of years of animal services? If we were included in this process, we may have reached the same conclusion, but we weren't included in this process. We ask the members of City Council, the mayor's office, to remember that this community can reach thousands and thousands of citizens through its members. We will be heard. We are not illegitimate. We are not terrorists. We are educators, legal professionals, physicians, small business owners, health care professionals, citizens of Los Angeles that deserve the opportunity to help the animals of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sorrentino. Susan Taylor.
I'm the Executive Director of Actors and Others for Animals. We are one of the oldest organizations in the city. Although we do not see eye to eye on all issues, we also have had a long history of working productively with the city. I had a brief opportunity to meet with Mr. Stuckey. I believe he recognizes the task in front of him and both the friction and frustration of the humane community. He admits he has no hands-on animal experience, but says he is going to rely on the humane community to assist him in this area, and seems open and willing to do so. When he was asked what he thought his greatest challenge would be, he said trust, reestablishing trust, maintaining trust, and of course, earning trust. We need to start being proactive instead of reactive. We need to remember the saying that concern will cure more sins than condemnation. We need to give him an opportunity. Will he succeed? None of us knows. But I am willing to accept that he means what he says, and to place in him the same trust that I am going to expect of him. I hope you will, too.
Thank you. Diane Scripps.
Members of the City Council, Mr. Stuckey, and fellow members of the humane community. I'm Diane Scripps, president and founder of Pet Orphans of Southern California, the oldest nonprofit shelter organization in Los Angeles. I'm here to express my hope that Mr. Stuckey's appointment as General Manager of Los Angeles Animal Services will be given the support that he must have in order to accomplish any mission of realistic change within the department. It is time to turn the proverbial swords into prowshares, reaching out with helping hands, not hostility, as we're the ones that can help to make a kinder, gentler world for the homeless animals if we offer Mr. Stuckey reasonable suggestions to make his agenda produce results. So, on that note, I wish to say to you, Mr. Stuckey, welcome to Los Angeles. Good luck. And if there's any way that pet orphans can offer you a paw, please give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Gillian? Is it Gillian or Jillian?
Gillian.
Gillian Lang.
Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers.
Good morning.
My name is Gillian Lang, and in 1975, I founded the Amanda Foundation, the first Los Angeles group formed specifically to rescue otherwise hopeless impounded pets. For the past 10 years, I have been director of the Lang Foundation. During my 30 years in animal rescue, the Department of Animal Regulation, as it was called, has been a forgotten department. I agree with Scott and many members of the humane community that we should have been represented in the process of choosing a new general manager of the department. On the other hand, I firmly believe Mr. Stuckey is the right man for the job. Although his background does not include any animal-related positions, he has a strong, strong background in management, which is what this department so urgently needs. One of his first concerns when he arrived to familiarize himself with the department was why are the shelters closed to the public on Monday, a question I have also often asked. Mayor Han's daunting plan to make Los Angeles a no-kill city by 2008 will not only require exceptional management and new ideas from the Department of Animal Services, as well as the humane community. And to put these new ideas into effect will require funds, which the Department of Animal Services always had trouble obtaining. Mr. Stuckey plans to develop a 501(c)(3) organization to help raise the funds needed to accomplish this goal. I believe Mr. Stuckey's calm demeanor and background in management and dedication in making Los Angeles a place where the shelters are a place of refuge that they were intended to be, and a no-kill city can change the passion in this wonderful humane community from one of discord to one of positive discourse. And I urge you to vote for him.
Okay. Next speaker, just from the for side before we get to the against side, which we'll get to shortly. Julie Butcher is our last speaker from that side, and then we will take equal number on the other side.
Will the time be extended? Because I have evidence of fraud on Mr. Stuckey's resume.
We will get to the other side in the order that the cards are here. We promise that.
Okay, thank you. As long as we all get a chance. Thank you.
Julie Butcher? Is Julie Butcher here? Oh, there she is.
I'm sorry. I guess I should have realized there were two sides to... On behalf of the workers of Animal Services, I stand to urge you to approve the appointment of Gerdens Stuckey. Wish him well, and then, if you would, back him up. Hold him accountable. Hold the department accountable, top to bottom. Make sure that the workers feel like their work is expected to be of quality, but that also that they're going to be protected and supported. Local 347 supports the sanctity of all life, including human life. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Dyer is our next speaker. Colin Biroch is after that, and then Pamlyn Firdan.
I'm Bill Dyer, Regional Director of Independent Animals. We join with the majority of the humane groups in Los Angeles to oppose this nomination for the most practical and obvious reason of all: no experience. It will take a very long time for anyone without experience to learn what is necessary to become an effective general manager. This is not the time for on-the-job training. Some say, why not...
(inaudible)
Some people say, why not give him a chance? Why not give me a chance? I say, why not give someone with experience a chance? We are in desperate need of a leader whose important decisions are based on knowledge and experience. The animals' lives depend on it. The secret nominating process has been a sham. Most egregious of all has been the false accusation by the deputy mayor that those who oppose this nomination are members of illegitimate terrorist organizations. That is libelous and slanderous, and deputy mayor, you should apologize for that false accusation. Please oppose this nomination. Thank you.
Next speaker is Colin Biroch. I'm sorry if I mispronounced it.
My rock.
Okay.
I'd like to waive my time. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Pamlyn Firdan.
Can you...can you please stop?
The clock is ticking. Please go ahead.
I know, I know, but I think that it's important that you give us the respect that we give you, and if you could just listen to what we have to say, I think that's the least that you can do. So, could you please listen?
Please go ahead.
Mr. Labange?
Please go ahead.
Oh, what is...
Please go ahead.
Huh? Thank you. LAAS General Manager nominee, Gerdens Stuckey, knows nothing about animals, nothing about the progressive policies needed to ensure a humane, no-kill shelter system, nor anything related to the advancement of animal services. This is beyond the pale, especially when there are other credible candidates like Terry Mosalero, Laura Beth Hyzen, and others, who are not only capable, compassionate, but brilliant attorneys, who have the leadership skills needed to take this cesspool of a department and push it into the 21st century. Mayor Han had the chance to do the noble thing and appoint a professional, modern general manager for LAAS. Instead, he turned his back on the humane community, but more importantly, he turned his back on the tens of thousands of cats, dogs, puppies, kittens, and wildlife, who continue to be killed needlessly in our six-city pounds. The humane community here in L.A. will not allow Gerdens Stuckey to be the general manager of LAAS, responsible for the lives of thousands of innocent animals. If you fail to perform your duty as responsible members of this community, then only increased anger can follow, and already low morale at LAAS will sink even lower as the campaign to rid our city of this incompetent manager progresses. Not only will activists continue their letters, faxes, emails, and phone calls, but will increase their protests with renewed anger and commitment. The humane community will not rest until Stuckey is gone and a humane, progressive, compassionate, and knowledgeable individual is appointed to this position. Thank you.
Thank you. We have 12 cards left and just under eight minutes, so just to remind folks. Lisa Jane is our next one, then Laura Beth Hyzen.
Lisa Jane, resident, Los Angeles City, 501(c)(3) adoption partner. Councilmembers, please vote no on the appointment of Mr. Stuckey. The United States of America and Los Angeles just had an election. Whether we like the outcome or not, all citizens got the opportunity to vote. As a legitimate rescue group within the city, we did not get even the opportunity to help select the criteria for the new GM of Animal Services. This is an outrage, and that the selection was covered in secrecy. Mr. Stuckey is not the correct person for the job. He is not a leader, and showed this at the Public Safety Committee by refusing to speak with anyone who opposed him after the meeting. It is sad that when the deputy mayor, Madeleine Bernstein, and Mr. Stuckey were asked questions, that facts were twisted and no rebuttals were allowed. A selection of such an important decision should not have been allowed to proceed in this manner, which it did. You, as councilmembers, represent the people of Los Angeles, and it is your duty to make sure that the voices of the people of Los Angeles are heard and proper appointments made so that the city departments may run smoothly. Mr. Stuckey has no experience to bring to L.A. to no-kill. His comments have proven it. His idea of temperament testing in the shelters is not the way. He is being taught by the very department that needs to change. Thank you.
Laura Beth Hyzen, and then Tina Clark.
Hi, I'm Laura Beth Hyzen. I oppose the appointment of Gerdens Stuckey. Mr. Stuckey has said many times that he has experience turning around troubled organizations, and while his management rhetoric sounds great, when we inquired with his former employers and searched historical records, we found no evidence of any trouble. Even assuming that there's truth to his statement that he turned around troubled organizations, it does not rise anywhere near the level of the troubles at L.A. Animal Services. He is not up to this job. Turning over $24 million a year budget, $154 million shelters, and his salary in this troubled environment is enormous fiscal waste. A yes vote says that you approve of secrecy, that you approve of massive fiscal waste. There are candidates who can get the community together, who people will support. Mr. Stuckey is not that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Clark, followed by Felice Catena.
Mayor Han declares that he has made his goal to make L.A. Animal Services no-kill by 2008. Then he appoints a man who has absolutely no experience and no clue as to how to go about instituting a no-kill policy. Something is very wrong here. At last week's Public Safety Committee meeting, a large number of people spoke in objection to Mr. Stuckey's appointment, and yet those of you on the committee approved the appointment, even while acknowledging that the great majority of speakers, not to mention the massive volume of correspondence you all received, were against the appointment. Something is definitely very wrong here. At that same meeting, Deputy Mayor Lou referred to the group protesting Mr. Stuckey's appointment as terrorists and illegitimate. As with many groups, some members of the humane community are frankly loud and rude. But rudeness is not terrorism, and activism is not terrorism. This name-calling should be seen for what it is, an obvious ploy to discredit and dismiss those who spoke against Mr. Stuckey's appointment. I ask you again, please stop ignoring public opinion and do not approve the appointment of Mr. Stuckey. of Mr. Stuckey.
Felice Catena, to be followed by Walter Moore.
I just want to say that I'm an executive recruiter, and if I had given one of my client companies a resume that was so mismatched to the field of service that his was to L.A. Animal Service, my client companies would fire me. Having said that, I'd like to give the rest of my two minutes to Dan Gus.
Walter Moore? I'm sorry, Mr. Moore is next.
Okay, great. Good morning. My name's Walter Moore. I'm the Republican candidate for mayor. Voting no on Mr. Stuckey is a no-brainer. He has no qualifications for the job, period. It's that simple. There are at least three people who are qualified attorneys who have an actual track record of saving animals. You heard from one of them, Laura Beth Heisen. There's Terry Mosalero, who's a partner with a respected firm here. There's Nathan Weinograd, a Stanford graduate with a track record of saving animals in San Francisco. Why do you think all these people are out here? It's not because they have a financial stake in it. They're altruistic. They want animals saved. Our mayor has stated that his objective is to have a no-kill shelter, hire someone qualified for the job, and in March, hire someone else qualified for the job. Me for mayor of L.A. Thank you.
All right. Perio Kazmaret and Daniel Gus. And then Julie Chadwick will be after that.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that the head of the Department of Public Health, Jonathan Fielding, is a professor of health services and pediatrics, co-director of UCLA Center for Healthier Children. Wayne Tand, the general manager of the Department of Transportation, has extensive experience in transportation planning, development operations, parking systems, public works, infrastructure maintenance. He's a registered professional engineer with civil and traffic engineering, and is a certified professional traffic operations manager. Laura Trejo is the general manager of the Department of Aging. She is a gerontologist with a master of science in gerontology. She works with individual countries and international organizations to develop initiatives and programs in the areas of aging, mental health, and Alzheimer's rehabilitation. This is a blueprint for choosing the general manager of a department. These positions are not interchangeable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Daniel Gus and Julie Chadwick.
I am Daniel Gus of the StandFoundation.org. Please listen up. I'm going to give you everything you need right now to vote no on Stuckey. I'm going to give you everything right now. Please refer to the packet, the six-page packet that I provided to the clerk, so you can follow along with the fraud, the fraud on Mr. Stuckey's resume, and I'm going to show you about it right now. Mr. Stuckey's most recent position in Rockville, Maryland. On the resume he submitted to the city of Los Angeles, he said his salary was $118,000. In the packet that I provided to you, there's a letter from the city of Rockville, Maryland, stating that Mr. Stuckey inflated his salary up from $105,000, and 125. That's a 13% inflation on his salary. His position before that is Assistant to the City Manager for Neighborhood Services in Charlotte, North Carolina. In the packet is a letter from the government of Charlotte, North Carolina, saying that Mr. Stuckey inflated that salary by 9%. On the second page of Mr. Stuckey's resume, please note that his position in 1994 as Director of Housing Management conflicts with the one below that, that says he was an intern at this time. How can you be a director of a government entity and an intern at the same time?
If I can ask you to conclude, we're just at the end of the time now.
I'm sorry, can I have 30 seconds to wrap up?
Give you 10 seconds, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Stuckey lost the 1994 position in less than five months on the job. Look at the packet I gave you. Three government entities are telling you he's lying on his resume about his salary.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. We're going to read the other names into the record today. Julie Chadwick, Rich McClellan, Susa Blakely, Mary Catalano, and Allison Lang. And please accept my apologies that we ran out of time before we were able to hear from the last speakers. Unless there's a motion to hear those, that will conclude public comment today. Okay? Hearing none. Ms. Misakowski is our first speaker. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I speak, I think I would like to ask Mr. Stuckey to make some remarks and generally indicate to us why he believes that he is the right candidate for this job, why he sought the job, and what his experience is that he brings to this position, and then I will give the committee report.
Mr. Labange?
Point of information? Could you explain to our...
Yes, we opened the public comment for what the motion was for. We extended it actually about three or four extra minutes, but the comment is closed. So if there wasn't a motion for any more comment, unfortunately, we have to read those remaining names into the record, and thank you for coming down and moved to the... And you can submit anything you need for the record as well. We'd be happy to look at that. Thank you. Mr. Stuckey?
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd just say that my roots run pretty deep in Los Angeles. My wife was born in Red here. My brother received his PhD from University of Southern Cal, so I have a long history with the city. When you look at the process that the city went through in terms of establishing the critical criteria for this position, what those spoke to were the issues of leadership and management experience, of which I have significant amounts in the private sector, because most of my training is on the financial services side, in the nonprofit world, having worked for a national organization, the Urban League, and having worked for multiple cities around the country. My experience has been in looking at entities that were having some operational issues and finding those systems and processes, kinds of things that we can do to correct that, to reach the performance standards that the organizations set forth that need to be accomplished. So my experience is very broad and very deep. I think capped off with a master's degree in public administration means that I'm extremely qualified to meet some of the challenges in the animal services world. I do agree that I do not have specific experience in animal services, but my experience in the world of management is very, very broad and very, very extensive in multiple cities around the country. So I think that what I bring to the table is a fresh perspective in department that has had some historical issues, and that I had the type of experience that I think that will help to address some of those issues.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. The members of the public services committee, as I said, listened to this extensively, and one I am sorry today that the person who presented the case to us is not with us, and that is a woman named Madeline Bernstein. Ms. Bernstein is the head of the SPCA in the Los Angeles area. She was the head of an executive search committee that the mayor had called together. That search committee contained members from the Humane Association, but as importantly, it contained a number of CEOs. And the reason they use CEOs in this executive search committee is that there is a recognition that we need to turn around the animal services department. There have been issues, there have been issues that we have heard from outside, from handling of volunteers, from the ability of the employees. One, it's been understaffed. We have not had a strong leadership who has helped to persuade and cause more resources to be put there. One of the things that Mr. Stuckey has talked about is creating a 501(c)(3) to augment and enhance the capability of the department. And we have heard in the past, very often, people have wanted to come and volunteer, not only their time and their energies, but resources to help enhance and create what we can be in that department. Ms. Bernstein told us something very important. She said that, yes, they recognized there wasn't specific experience in this realm, but of the 14 to 15 major criterias that they looked at and that they reviewed, the 71 different applicants, they said the most important criteria that they looked at, and again, these were CEOs of organizations that recognized the need to come in and turn this department around. The three most important criteria were leadership, management, and compassion. And under those three, they felt that this candidate excelled and exceeded expectations. There were issues that we asked, because we received some of the same testimony, about presentation of discrepancies in background. Ms. Bernstein indicated that along with the others, they looked at every element of the resume, both those that were put there to contact and those who were not put there to be contacted. And this search agency, search entity, did look at and call all of the respective areas where Mr. Stuckey had had previous employment, to get reactions, impressions, and confirmation, or just other comments. And they got very, very high comments, and said, in fact, that Mr. Stuckey had done very, very well in some agencies where there had been some similar kinds of issues or troubles, and did effectively come in and manage it. We had a unanimous vote of the committee. We were all aware, as I think all the members of the council are, that there has been considerable input on this. We recognize that, and listened very, very carefully to both the public testimony and the testimony that was given from the entities that said of those who were looked at, Mr. Stuckey's qualifications seemed the highest in the recommendation from the entities that were pulled together by the mayor's office to help him make a selection that ended up in the presentation today of Mr. Stuckey to us. So the committee does ask for an eye vote, as the committee affirmed this, and I believe that the mayor's office is here for questions as well from those who are on the committee.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I'd like the representative of the mayor's office to come forward, please. I think that it's important to note how the selection was made. This is a little unusual process, the panel that was put together by the mayor's office to screen the applicants. I believe there were over 70 individuals that applied. I know we heard this in Public Safety Committee, but many of our colleagues haven't heard it, so if you could just explain briefly, and if you'll hold my time, please, Mr. President, the process that, the organizations that were involved in the process that came about with this decision.
Thank you, councilman, for the opportunity to describe the extraordinary search process. This is unusual for a general manager search, but we knew this was a very important decision facing the mayor, and one that would be controversial. To that end, the mayor started by forming a focus group consisting of not all, but many, animal organizations from the city of Los Angeles. They included Actors and Others for Animals, Heart, the Amanda Foundation, Best Friends Animal Sanctuary, the Sam Simon Foundation, and the Animals Issues Movement, among others. This group met in a facilitated discussion to describe the qualities they would like to see in a general manager. From this basis, working with the Personnel Department, we developed a job description. The mayor asked Madeline Bernstein, Executive Director of the SPCA Los Angeles, to chair this search committee. With Madeline Bernstein's help, and with the Personnel Department's great assistance, this job description and job posting was listed on many animal websites, government magazines, industry magazines, and throughout the country. There was great interest in the job. I believe 71 applications were received by the city. At this point, the screening committee, which again was chaired by Madeline Bernstein, and included a former head of the Long Beach Bureau of Animal Control, Paul Jolly, the director of the Petco Foundation. It included Leanne Palm, Regional Vice President of VCA Animal Hospitals. It included Dick Schumacher, Dr. Dick Schumacher, Executive Director of the California Veterinary Medical Association. And it included a management consultant from McKinsey. This screening committee reviewed all applications. They invited 14 of these applicants, correction, 15 of these applicants, to come for an interview. That list was narrowed down to four finalists. They were interviewed again, and the group as a whole, based on the criteria that was developed by the focus group, selected Mr. Stuckey to recommend to the mayor that Mr. Stuckey be the general manager.
In another general manager positions, has a similar process taken place? Or is this the first time?
The first time we've gone as far as creating a focus group and asking the animal community to help us develop a job description and to do the nationals, and to outreach for the applicants on the national search.
And these are all people who have an interest in the protection of animals?
Yes.
All people who have a concern for the department that we know has had problems in the past?
Yes, sir.
To eradicate those problems?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stuckey, regarding the allegation of your inflated salary, did that include compensation other than a salary, for example, vehicles or anything else?
Yes, sir, it did. What it included, compensation for auto allowance, and at Rockville, we receive a 10% executive allowance on top of our base salary.
So you're being candid and forthright with your statement about your economic compensation package?
Absolutely. Matter of fact, I even have copies of my pay stubs that I would be willing to share, which would indicate that as well.
I'm not the IRS. I don't need to see those, sir. I listened to the testimony in committee, and I know it was extensive testimony. A lot of people who don't have a lot of patience, a lot of criticism, a lot of concern, that don't know you at all. And I had an opportunity to meet with you personally and learn what you want to do with the Department of Animal Services. And I have that great concern that many of my colleagues have, many of the people here have. And I know that we've had a lot of problems in that department, and I think that giving you an opportunity, obviously, there's a lot of concern about the department. There's a lot of people who can be watching, a lot of people who can be monitoring, a lot of people who can be asking questions. And as general managers in this city don't have civil service protection, if they don't perform, obviously, you know how that door swings, and we don't want that to happen. We want to correct the department. So I'm going to support the nomination and hope that your outreach to the community, as you stated you're going to do, will be received by the community in a very positive, very successful nature. I just want to comment on some of the individuals wearing terrorist shirts. There was a comment made during the screening by a representative from the mayor's office about people who commit criminal activity, and some people who were identified as terrorists. And I just want to make a distinction between those that are going to comply with the law and show respect, and those that are going to commit crimes and face the consequences of the criminal justice system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Any other members of the council wishing to be heard at this time?
I'll vote.
Seeing none. Sergeant, thank you for your help. If there's no other council members wishing to be heard at this time, let's open the roll on confirmation. Ah, Mr. Verregosa.
I'd like to ask, Don, Deputy Mayor. Can you share with me the selection process? I know you started to share a bit of that, but maybe go over it. As I understand, there was a broader group of stakeholders involved in putting the job description together. Maybe you could share that, just what happened, from the job description to the selection. Are you the person that would know that, or...
Yeah, I did describe that the last time I was up here.
Why don't you do it again for me?
Sure, be happy to. The pleasure of the president?
Pleasure of the council member. I'm the one that asked the question.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
As I stated before...
You mentioned that.
We asked a focus group. We convened a focus group of many, but not all, animal organizations throughout the city. This included Actors and Others for Animals, the Heart Organization, the Amanda Foundation, Best Friends Animal Sanctuary, the Sam Simon Foundation, and the Animal Issues Movement. This focus group gathered with a facilitator and brainstormed about the qualities that they would like to see in a new general manager. They identified 14 qualities. What was interesting is that number one on this list was leadership skills. Number two...
Number two on the list was exceptional managerial skills, and third was effective communication skills.
Was there anything on the list regarding an ability or experience working with animals?
Yes, it followed customer service orientation, volunteer fundraising skills, public relation and media, and media skills, and relatively low on the list, but on the list, was animal control, animal rights, and humane community knowledge. It was important, but relatively low on the list.
Now, this group that, of stakeholders that you described, were they a part of the entire process, or just the, a part of the brainstorming process that came up with, I guess, the job description, or the 15 qualities that you spoke to?
This particular group developed the qualities and helped to develop the job description. Madeline Bernstein did continue on from this committee to chair the search committee, which actually evaluated, well, actually helped out with the outreach.
And who was on the search committee?
The search committee was composed of Madeline Bernstein, who chaired, president of the SPCA Los Angeles, Roger Hatagayama, former manager of the Bureau of Animal Control for the city of Long Beach, Paul Jolly, past president of the Los Angeles Animal Services Commission, and director of the Petco Foundation, Leanne Palm, regional vice president of VCA Animal Hospitals of Southern California, Dr. Dick Schumacher, a veterinarian and executive director of the California Veterinary Medical Association, and Jack Vance, Management Resources, Inc., formerly of McKinsey.
Now, my understanding was that there was a, or is, rather, that there was a national search of some sort. Is that correct?
After the job description was published, the Personnel Department advertised this job opening nationally, yes.
Nationally. Now, when the candidates who submitted applications were finished, were there candidates with animal services background, either nonprofit, governmental?
Yes.
How many of them?
I'm not sure how many of the candidate, of the 71 actually had, as you described.
And that 71 was windowed down to what?
14 or 15 were actually given first interviews.
First interviews. And in the 14 or 15, how many had animal services background, some connection with animals?
About half of them.
About half of them? And then the 14 went to what?
Uh, four candidates had final, or second interviews.
And of those four final candidates, did any of them have any animal services background?
Two did.
Two of them did. Now, there was some mention of inaccuracies in a resume. Is there any truth to that allegation? I think there's a, a, the Stan Foundation distributed to the council members a, a letter dated November 9th, or a memo, rather, which indicates that, and has as attachments, a letter from the city of Rockville, a letter from the Charlotte Housing Authority, and a letter from the Charlotte Human Resources Representative. And in that, they make representations regarding salary that seem to be a little different from the resume. Can you speak to that? Was this issue raised during the selection process at any time?
No.
No? And during, was there a process in the selection process where you verified the representations that were made in the resume?
Yes, the Personnel Department verifies all of the, I shouldn't say all, I shouldn't actually speak for the Personnel Department. I believe Charlotte Stuckey, executive recruitment from the Personnel Department is here and available for.
Maybe the Personnel Department representative who might, is there a Personnel Department The, Ms. Struckey, I think my staff gave you a copy of that. I, this is the first time I'd heard of it, when one of the people raised the issue, that there was a letter from the Stan Foundation, which makes representations with regard to inaccuracies in Mr. Stuckey's resume specifically regarding inflating his salary by 13% in Rockville, Maryland, by 9% in Charlotte, and belatedly admitting to the Public Safety Committee that he was asked to leave another position after the foundation made that public. Were any of these representations investigated either prior to or after they were made in committee?
First, I'd like to say my name is Charlotte Struckey.
Yes.
I'm senior executive recruiter from the Personnel Department.
How are you?
I was basically here as an observer, but just to answer your question, what we did for the mayor's office, as far as this search is concerned, is we turned over the background investigations for the top three candidate, top, four candidates, actually, to our Background Investigation Division, which is comprised of former police officers with the Los Angeles Police Department. They usually handle the background investigations for our entry-level police officers and firefighters. Because we knew that this was a very sensitive subject, and it would require extensive research, something more so that I could do on my own, they had a team that put together an entire package of information that we turned over to the mayor's office regarding all of the final candidates. As far as, they looked at references that were provided by Mr. Stuckey, as well as the other candidates, they also looked, they developed references. So they spoke to people who suggested that you speak to someone else. They spoke to mayors, council people, former employers.
Of both Rockville and Charlotte?
Right. So all of that information is in a final report. It's a pretty good-sized report that we turned over to the mayor's office. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at that. I have not seen the information that was passed out today. Personnel Department is more than willing to go back, look at it if it's, if you deem necessary. But I, I didn't get a chance to really look at that today, so I don't, I can't really speak to it.
Can't speak to it, yeah. But there was an extensive investigation, and these were background officers that engaged in that?
Yes, from the Background Investigation Division. They have, they put a team together.
Right. Thank you very much. What were the, I guess for Mr., the, Don, if you could, what were the qualifications that led to the choosing of Mr. Stuckey? I mean, you, you said there were 15 qualifications or characteristics that the selection committee was looking. When the choice was finally made, what, what stood out in the mind of the selection committee?
In the mind of the selection committee?
Well, the collective wisdom of the selection committee.
I will be happy to try to describe their preferences. As I said before, the number one quality that they were looking for was an exceptional In this particular department, they felt that a new direction was needed, and they were looking for someone that provided a strong leadership and guidance, that would communicate a new strategic vision with the city leadership, peers, employees, and the community. We were looking, they were looking for someone that would champion.
I know what they were looking for, but ultimately, when they decided on Mr. Stuckey, what was it that stood out among the 15, among his qualities, and comparing him to the 15 characteristics that they were looking for? What was it that stood out?
Again.
And separated him from the other individuals, other 70 individuals, or at least the, the other five, six, I guess, that were in the top, the last group of.
Four.
Four, that were in the last group of.
Again, they were exceptional leadership skills, exceptional managerial skills, and effective communication skills.
Now, I guess for Mr. Stuckey, first of all, I want to welcome you, and I know it's always a difficult process, and I was just, I was thinking, actually, while you were sitting there, what it must be like to be here in front of an entire chamber and a whole group of individuals speaking out against your appointment. I, I want you to be as comfortable as possible here, and welcome to Los Angeles. But how did you come to know about this job, Mr. Stuckey?
It was posted on a website that I sometimes frequent, and that's how I was able to identify that the position was available.
Now, it was said here by Don that you have a strong background in leadership experience. Obviously, no good managerial experience as well, but no animal service experience. How do you intend to bridge that gap between your leadership and managerial skills and, you know, the, the, the lack of experience that you have in animal services?
I think what I've done is I've anticipated, hopefully, started on November the 15th. So I came to Los Angeles two and a half weeks prior to that time, on my own dime, voluntarily, to spend time meeting people and getting to know individuals within the rescue world and animal services world. So I took it upon myself to be proactive and say.
Now, you've already done this, you said?
Yes, sir.
For two weeks?
Yes, sir. And so I've had meetings with a good number of the groups. Matter of fact, my wife and I attended an event on Sunday that was hosted by Best Friends, wonderful event whereby they were presenting rescue groups from around the city, looking for animals to, to be adopted, and we were engaged there for a good part of Sunday. And so those are the type of things that I have done voluntarily to say, I understand the concerns, and anticipated those concerns. So it was up to me to reach out and to begin the dialogue with various members of the animal services world, so that they can begin to know me and for me to get to know them. I mean, at our level, all of us have individuals that we want to lean on for technical information. And so I will continue to do that in my tenure as general manager, but I began the process some time ago.
Mr. Verregosa, last question, please.
Last question, yes. When you did that, you did that with groups that were supportive, but also not supportive of your appointment?
Absolutely. They weren't all Stuckey fans, that's for sure. But it was an opportunity to engage with them, because I think dialogue is important.
Good.
It's not so much important that we agree or disagree. What's important is that we identify those items that are the priority items for the city of Los Angeles as it relates to animal services, and what resources are we going to bring to bear to abate these, these, these issues.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Carradines.
Yes, I take the statements by anybody who speaks on the public record very seriously, but I want to afford you the opportunity, if you can, at this time, and also maybe I misunderstood the statement that was made about you earlier, regarding on your resume or your curriculum vitae that you, you put down a period of time, which somebody said earlier today that you were actually an intern, when you were stating that you were running a department somewhere. Can you please clarify that?
Sorry, that was the Charlotte Housing Authority. I was an intern with them for almost two years in unpaid capacity as a graduate student. And then later on, I was appointed to the position of Director of Housing Management.
So as far as you're concerned, there is no conflict on the timing of what you've stated, what your experience is, and, and what was going on during a certain period of time?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Ms. Hahn.
I call for the previous question.
Okay, you are the final speaker on the queue. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please open the roll in confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for serving the city. Look forward to working with you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 52, and that's confirmation of Ms. Kim Day, and a C E N R report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay. Members, item 52 now before us. Public hearing was held in committee just this morning, and as the clerk has stated, the committee report has been circulated. Let me recognize Mr. Carradines, chairman of the Commerce Committee, first to speak.
Earlier today, we had an extensive discussion with Ms. Day about her appointment, but I would also like to say that the backdrop of that discussion is the extensive work that we've been doing with her in and around L A W, especially around the LAX Master Plan. And I just wanted to remind the community and this body that as my experience being a member and the chairman of the Commerce Committee, we've been having to work with L A W extensively. And my experience as of late has been very good. Ms. Day, you've been, as interim, you've been doing a good job, a very, very thorough job in responding to the needs and requests that we have, being forthright about information. And as a matter of fact, in this room, just a few weeks ago, you actually corrected yourself on something that some people might have criticized you for having the numbers wrong or what have you, but you were, in fact, the first one to actually correct that. And you didn't have to do it in the full view of, of the public, but you did, and you did apologize. To me, that shows that you take your responsibilities seriously, that you're about giving the proper information and being forthright about your responsibilities, and the tremendous task at hand of running one of the biggest departments in the country, certainly perhaps the biggest department here in our city. So I just wanted to express to the public and to you, thank you very much for the work that you've been doing. I personally feel that your capacity as permanent director is, in fact, warranted, and, and that doesn't, isn't based on the fact that you and I have only talked a few times. That's based on the fact that we've engaged in some very serious matters. We've engaged in, for example, numbers of billions of dollars. We've engaged on issues that talk about the future of the community of Los Angeles and beyond, and I think you've done a wonderful job. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, and I thank you for that, and I definitely support your appointment.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The security problems at LAX, I'm sure you're aware of them, and one of the local news stations broadcast that recently. Can you tell me how that is being addressed?
Well, if I could, first, I'd like to say that we don't believe that there is a security problem at LAX. Channel 4 filmed some things happening. They filmed people passing through a door that is marked restricted access, that is not a secure area, no badge is required. The signage on that door is actually meant to keep the public out of airline offices. Also, they talked about some baggage that was unattended, which they said was screened baggage touched by people who are not authorized. That's not the case. That was actually inbound baggage that was waiting to be picked up and taken to passengers who had been disconnected from their luggage in flight. As a result of the accusations by Channel 4, we asked TSA to go out. They observed the airport for 48 hours and said they found absolutely no security breaches at the Tom Bradley Terminal.
Okay. Well, I have a personal concern about luggage, whether it's inbound or outbound, and having public access to that, which is a whole nother matter. And I know that you've been at the airport for a while. You have experience, I understand, in operating an airport. And the previous man that was, Mr. Stuckey, the issue about animals and the issue about care for animals. And I pose a question. Have you ever flown an airplane?
Have I personally?
Have you ever piloted an airplane?
Piloted? No, I have not.
And you can be well-qualified to operate a large airport?
Well, we as, we as an airport don't fly planes, so.
I know we don't.
Right.
And as a general manager, you're not on the tarmac guiding the planes in and out of the, of the facility.
Despite what you've seen on the television program, LAX, no.
That's not you.
That's not me.
Okay. That was the next one I was going to get to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do support the, the appointment. How long have you served as intern?
13 months.
Okay. Well-qualified right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations on, on your nomination. Thank you for the service already. Could you detail a little bit? I know during the master plan vote, introduced a motion about green building and lead standards, and if you could just share with me a little bit of some of the ideas. And if you could just share with me a little bit of some of the ideas that you have around that in making the construction of L A X a kind of more sustainable construction and really leading the way in one of the largest public works projects that will be hopefully maybe even LEED certified?
Happy to do that. As I think we've discussed, LEEDs does not currently have a certification project, process that is applicable to airports per se. They have standards for office buildings and for renovation of residential and some other categories. That, that said, they have some goals that are very achievable at an airport. They just don't have a certification program, and we're very committed to those goals. Those goals relate to minimizing heat gain. They, they have to do with using recycled materials, developing an overall environmental package for a building to minimize the use of power and, and heat, et cetera. So what, what we, what we did at Ontario and what we plan to do in all of the projects we build from here on out, whether they be at L A X, Ontario, or Palmdale, is to try and meet those goals that are set out by LEEDs, even though we cannot actually get them certified.
The, the building standards, I think, could be. I mean, we, there have been some LEED certification just on building standards. And I know it generally applies to office buildings, but they've, they've gotten the approval in other places and been built to that standard, I suppose, is, is the best way of putting it. Could you also let us know, what does this encompass in terms of cooperation from the airlines? And what should we be looking for in planning that with them? First question. We'll go ahead and answer that, and I'll ask the second one.
We know one of the reasons LEEDs was developed to start with is that developers were building buildings that they didn't intend to own throughout their life. They put in very inexpensive systems that weren't particularly energy efficient, knowing they were going to sell the buildings. Well, we are in a different situation where we are the owner of the building, so it's to our benefit and to the airlines' benefit for us to go ahead and utilize these goals to start with and build a building that over its life is, is less expensive to operate. So I think the airlines will be in line with us because they will benefit financially just as we will.
And second question, or third, is for staff requirements on that, are you looking at having in-house expertise, you know, green building engineers? How would you best manage that as we go forward with constructions?
We do actually have an architect in-house who has gone through the LEEDs program. Because we are actually, I keep using that word, I don't mean that. Because we will not be certifying the building, I'm not sure it's important that we have people that are certified themselves on staff, but certainly in all the consultants and in all of the projects that we go out, out for, we will be looking for professionals that do understand and are certified in LEEDs.
And one last thing, and your staff's been very responsive about it. And I understand that there was a lot that I didn't even know about that exists like this, but I've seen in other airports, some of the cellphone waiting lots that I know as there's a lot of circulation problems. And we'll, we'll see what circulation exists after we go through our yellow light projects. But as a place where people can wait for their passenger pickup, reduce kind of the impact of the air pollution, because the cars that are private cars are among the, the last really still fossil fuel burning or polluting in the worst way. And that would be just, I think, a very positive part of, of looking at the modernization.
It's actually something we are looking at implementing now. We're studying at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sackowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too, as a member of the committee, rise in support. And I, one, believe that this nomination sort of speaks for itself. And this council has seen more interaction with this agency and, and Ms. Day so that it can make a decision in an enlightened way. What I did want to mention, though, and just take this opportunity, is to mention that, Mr. Garcetti, you talked about emissions and standards and the like. And I would like to suggest or recommend that every council member, if you cannot attend, perhaps have a staff member attend our weekly meetings now that Mr. Cardenas has set up on these issues, on L A X and the master plan overview. We had a presentation today, and I know Ms. Hahn will agree, that was quite amazing about the new kind of airline, airplanes themselves that are coming in and what that means, not only for the master plan but for the future of the operation of the airport. And one of the things that I think particularly those who have had environmental concerns, whether it's noise impact at the airport, environmental relative to air quality and emissions, what we were shown and what was demonstrated is that these new large planes, which many have feared because of their potential impact of delivering more millions of people, that in fact, they are significantly lower in air emissions. They are a finer grade, well-engineered, new, new type of airplane. And they are very significantly less noisy. So the kinds of things operationally that are going to occur at the airport and the preparation for the future, we are now looking at, as Mr. Cardenas is exploring this in, in committee, and some of that might not effectively come to the council for the full presentations. But I think to see that material, to see that information, to have your staffs available so that those things that can come forward of interest should to this council, it's, it's, it's a great credit to the, to L A W A to be looking in the forefront and working with its partners, not just as some believe, more bigger expansion, but smarter, safer, less polluting, quieter. Those aren't the words you usually hear when you hear about modernization, but those are the words that we're preparing for and developing as well as environmentally more sensitive. And I just wanted to indicate that I asked Ms. Day this morning, because I think one of the most important aspects of L A W A in the future compared to L A W A in the past, is the preparation of a staff for master plan and project building. As we all know, we've traveled to many airports where living through projects is difficult. We have the customer to be thinking of as we're going through our building projects. But most importantly, we have the bottom line, managing the dollars, making sure that the projects are delivered on time, on quality, and under budget or at budget. And that the staff needs to shift. And I think, Ms. Day, you might just talk a little bit about how you're going to begin really looking forward to that next, the evolution of where we are at L A W A relative to that issue.
Certainly. Well, as I mentioned this morning, we've been in a planning mode for the last 10 years. And now we need to shift into an implementation mode, and that's a very different thing for this organization to do. We currently have, we're in the process of selecting consultants for both a reengineering study on our procurement and also on an organizational review. And through that, we will be, we will be streamlining a lot of the things we do now that we'll have to be doing more of and faster of as we start implementing. We also are going to be bringing our key staff together, make sure that we have a clear vision, that we're all on the same page, and that as we go forward, we are all focused on the same goal.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I just rise and echo many of the thoughts that my colleagues have already shared. I in particular wanted to thank you for your tenacity, your ability to break down many of these complicated issues with so many different stakeholders. From my point of view, it's very admirable.
Thank you.
But I do want to emphasize that I, some of the products, if you will, the, the results of this hard work, I hope to see come in the form of how we create jobs in the different parts of the city. And for me, it's crucial to understand that the economic engine we call the airport is not only of international relevance and has a local impact, but it has a regional impact from a jobs point of view. And I just want to be so emphatic about that because many folks in certain parts of the city just don't have access to job opportunities. And I know there's hard work coming from Mr. Cardenas Committee in dealing with these kinds of issues. But just being emphatic about that, I don't know what else to say, but let you know how important that is to me. On another level, from a regional point of view, it would be exciting to begin seeing how plans can start evolving in the other airports so that we truly give substance to the notion of a regional network. I had the operator speak with some of the airline companies. And what they're doing, like putting Ontario slash Los Angeles to get more people to Los Angeles opposed to Canada, I mean, how we drive the market towards the region, I think is also crucial. And so I know we're being creative in that respect as well. But again, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And I think a trial by fire would probably be an understatement. But again, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labance?
Congratulations on your nominee.
Thank you.
And tell me, what's the Los Angeles International Airport, what would you like to see in the year 2017?
I would like to see that we have completed the build-out of all of the approved projects and that the passenger service level has risen way beyond our, our dreams right now, that travel is easy, it's safe, it's secure, and that people not only enjoy it, but they, but they feel comfortable doing it. And I'd also like to see that more people are using Ontario and Palmdale.
And from other regional standpoints, what do you see? I know our sister city of Nagoya is just in the completing an airport, I believe to be built in the ocean adjacent to Japan's mainland. What do you see from the regional standpoint?
Well, I, we, I certainly feel that we at L A W A are trying hard to grow our other airports, but I think there has to be more of a commitment beyond just us. I think Burbank and Long Beach and John Wayne have a responsibility as well. And I'm hoping that in the next few years, a dialogue can begin and we can move to a position where they're actually taking some of the burden off of L A X.
And you're, and you're researching your history of L A X and when we acquired the right to operate Ontario. Do you know how that happened? And do we see that as a potential for some of the regional challenges in the future?
What I know, and I may be wrong, but I believe the City of Ontario came to the City of L A and, and asked them to take over the operation of, of the airport. The issue isn't so much who operates, that I believe. The issue is the community around airports are concerned about noise, they're concerned about traffic. And we have to find ways to mitigate those negatives so that airports can indeed grow.
Well, I think it's just real important that we look at those. I know in Palmdale, I think the people in Palmdale, when we first bought the land, no one lived but a few. And now a lot of people live in Palmdale, and people will call for Palmdale. But that doesn't mean that Palmdale truly wants all of it because the, the growth that is taken in that region. I just hope we look at the whole area. I hope you look at Nagoya as, as an example, and some of our other airports. Members, I was fortunate to be in Hong Kong and saw the work that was done in Hong Kong. And then also the fact that they had their high-speed rail go from their departure, arrival area directly into Hong Kong. Explain what transit in your vision you see in the future coming into Los Angeles International Airport?
Well, certainly through the master plan, we plan to connect to the Green Line so that a, a train passenger can come right into the airport and won't have to switch to a bus. I think beyond that, we have, we're making provisions so that if the Green Line extends, we can have a, a station up on aviation. We're certainly providing for the capability of the Maglev, should that be approved. So we, we embrace it. We think we need to get people off of our highways.
Exactly, and off the 405. And the closer you come to the airport, the better it is that people will use that as an alternative. You mentioned Maglev and high-speed rail. I just think if I would vision out, I think one day the Green Line becomes the high-speed rail line and the Slauson Line becomes a light rail line. And that may be 20 years from now. Unfortunately, it takes that long. But to have high-speed rail that would connect through Orange County and out through Riverside and up through Ontario and others. Congratulations. I hope you have great success in leading our Los Angeles International Airport, which has a great legacy of general managers. I was very proud of your predecessor, and I was very proud of Cliff Moore and many of the others who had the vision to build it. Now you have that role, Kim, and I want you to have all the success. You can count on me. But I think it's important, as other members have mentioned, to have that engagement with community so we know the value of what it is. Because, members, without the Port of Los Angeles, without the Transcontinental Railway, without the water that Mulholland brought, and without Los Angeles International Airport from little old Minesfield near Inglewood to the great airport it is, we would be the great city of Los Angeles. I thank you and I congratulate you and salute you in your effort as the new chief of Los Angeles International Airport.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just also want to rise in support and congratulate you, as Councilmember Reyes did, and just your tenacity and your work getting through this last small little challenge. And just for, for me, the, hearing you publicly recommit and assure the, the community on your support for the community benefits package as we move forward on the, on the master plan is just really important. The recent motion that, that went through in terms of tripling the funding for the community hiring program and also working to find ways that the contractors that are housed in the low-income census tracts, undoubtedly communities like South L A and East L A, would finally get a chance to see some of the wealth from some of these major development projects come home to their area. That would be an important thing, and I'm sure you're very, very committed to that. But just your, your thoughts?
This, this is a personal commitment. I, I think that L A X has been in a situation for many years, we have not been allowed to mitigate any of the negatives that we, we have created in the communities. And here with this master plan, we truly have an opportunity. And it would just, it would be, it would be negligent of us to miss this opportunity to create the jobs, to do some of the environmental issues, to do the, the noise mitigation. So I am totally in support of us going ahead with this program. I've really enjoyed my interface with the coalition, and I'm looking forward to going back with them to Washington to sell this to FAA.
Excellent. And then just the other point, I know a number of council members have mentioned the issues of, of safety. It comes up with the L A P D quite often. And I know a couple of council members just introduced motions about the briefings that ought to take place. Is, I don't know if it was NBC or one of the national networks that just showed L A X is leading the way on near misses in terms of some of the accidents that have happened out on the runways. It would be great to see you as a new leader of our airports to find a mechanism to come into council and give us as quickly as possible some type of an update on the incidents that took place. Because what we, what we get from the media, as I think Cindy just pointed out sometime, or maybe it wasn't Cindy, maybe it was you, I overheard somebody talking about, I think it was you, Kim, about the discrepancies that were in the news stories. I think it'd be absolutely helpful for us to get quick briefings as soon as possible on the official version of what's taking place, what the city's doing to, to respond to them. Because as we go out into community meetings and so forth, people are asking those questions. What took place? What are we doing to try to improve the situation? Not the least of which, obviously, is the modernization plan at the airport, which is sort of at the helm of many of them. But as it interfaces with FAA and other federal agencies, we don't get that information as readily as I think we could. And hopefully, that'll be something that you could, you could provide.
It's a great suggestion. We'll work on a mechanism to, to accomplish that.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
We are here to help, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Full heartedly support it.
Thanks.
Mr. Varegosa?
Yes, Ms. Day, how are you?
Good morning, I'm good, thank you.
You, we recently went through the L A, master plan, L A X master plan. And there were a number of issues raised by some of the community members with respect to impacts and mitigations and the like at L A X. What's your plan for addressing an ongoing dialogue regarding concerns with the neighbors in the surrounding communities of L A X?
You know, one of the requirements of the specific plan is that we actually name an individual as a stakeholder liaison. I think it's really important as we move forward that we not close our door at this point, because we've done a very good job of outreach to this point. As we move forward, we need to keep that dialogue open. And I think there are different groups of stakeholders that we will have different types of meetings with. But I see the stakeholders, including the airlines, on some of the operational issues being as important to the decision-making as our team or the consultant team. I see the community similarly having an ongoing role as we move, move forward.
So you have plans to engage, continue to engage the community in a dialogue of some sort?
Absolutely.
As we proceed with the implementation of the master plan?
I, I see it continuous.
Now, what are your thoughts about Southern California, regional approach to aviation? Can you share with us a little bit about, since you will not only be supervising the L A X, but a few other airports as well?
Well, we certainly want people to use other airports so that we decrease the pressure on L A X. And in fact, the, the master plan builds out L A X to only accommodate 78.9 million people. That means the other airport- That means the other airports in the region need to step up, they need to allow carriers to grow. In fact, they need to encourage carriers to grow at their airports. We are certainly doing that at Ontario. We are trying to get carriers in Palmdale. In fact, Scenic Air should start service there in December. It's the first time in years we've had commercial service out of Palmdale. But we can't do it alone with just our airports. We need Burbank, we need Long Beach, we need John Wayne. It really is something that this entire community has to talk about, because the demand will be there, and somehow we need to accommodate it. I think also, we talked earlier about the ground transportation infrastructure, that's a keen part of this whole solution, whether it be Maglev, the Green Line, or our flyaway system. We've got to match the capacity in the air transit system with the ground transportation service so they all function.
What about infrastructure investment in some of those other imports like Ontario, Palmdale?
We're currently doing a master plan for both Ontario and Palmdale. You will see both of them sometime in the next calendar year come before this body. We are trying to get Ontario ready to grow. It's not enough, though, to build it. We are marketing it right now actively. We need new carriers to come into Ontario, and we need those that are there to add more flights. So we're trying to get people more interested in Ontario. Part of that is by, we're trying to keep rates cheaper at Ontario for people to use the facility in terms of parking, so that we're encouraging passengers to go there. If the market is there, then the airlines will follow. So we are doing what we can, what's apparent to us, at least at this point, to try and grow those airports. Palmdale is difficult. There's not an established market in that area. As you know, right now, the ground transportation system to go to Palmdale is not very attractive. So over the next few years, we need to find a way to solve that.
What are some of your ideas with respect to that?
Well, you know, one of the things that is...
If we could get a preview?
Certainly, everyone has talked about a rail connection to Palmdale. If a rail connection is not built, then I think there has to at least be a highway improvement so that it is accessible.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you, Ms. Day. Under your leadership, there is a plan called Alternative J for the Van Nuys Airport, which is out there in the San Fernando Valley, something that the community has been working on for about 12 years, and they've been wanting to see that come to fruition. At a recent BOAC meeting, I went and reminded them of the importance of that, and they committed to me and the community that they were going to move on that soon over the coming months. And under your leadership, you have indicated that in the beginning to the middle of next year, we should come to fruition on that Alternative J plan, which is something that the people in San Fernando Valley have been looking forward to for many, many years. So just once again, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that you've worked on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I want to mention two, because I know it's real important. I think what Mr. Varegosa spoke of tipped me to the idea, I think you have to do a better job of public information about what is an airport. A lot of people say, well, why don't you divert everything to Ontario? But planes now come, two-thirds passengers, one-third cargo. I think all the flowers in the city come from South America, is that right? You know, I mean, it's amazing to see that, but the public information that's needed for people to understand the infrastructure. Because it would be easy to say to the airlines, and probably the people who come, some would probably rather land in Palmdale, but infrastructure's not there, roadways, and keep the push on for high-speed rail throughout the region and talk about that. Be a leader, as Los Angeles International Airport has always been in discussing that. But I think you need a basic public information on that issue. And on the other side, everyone's concerned about security, both as they fly through the skies or as they come to the venue of an airport. And have that prime on your mind all the time that is there. I think it's real important that you have that too. But please take note of that, and if you could have someone develop that. Thank you.
Will too.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll and confirmation. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I really look forward to working with all of you.
Forthwith, please, on this item, and forthwith as well on item number two.
Mr. President?
Ms. Sikowsky.
Can I ask for reconsideration on item 56? This was a request to have the city attorney present an ordinance to us regarding a laser's matter that came through EERC. There is a circulation, first of all, let me ask for reconsideration, and this is to amend it and ask the city attorney for a report back in the presentation of that ordinance.
First, let's open the roll and reconsideration of item 56. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fifty-six now back before us, and I believe there's an amending motion that has been distributed.
Right, the amending motion has been circulated, asking for the city attorney with the actuaries to do a little more work on this before they present the ordinance and report back.
Okay. Without objection, let's reopen the roll, item 56 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. So that took care of item 52. Prior to that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number one was called special by Councilmember Varegosa.
Mr. Varegosa.
Yes, Mr. President. Members, I was asked to make a verbal approval, a verbal motion, rather, for approval of the PCN in this matter. There's no controversy in the Eagle Rock community, has supported the Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council, TARA, the Eagle Rock Chamber of Commerce, and they've all submitted letters in support to the zoning administrator, and I would urge your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Varegosa. Other members of the council wishing to speak on item number one? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 13 was called special by Councilmember Perry, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wish, I don't know where Mr. Deaton is right now, if the CLA can come to the table. Is there a CLA here? Okay, why don't I get somebody from the CLA's office up here, because I need to ask them some questions on the record, and then I'll hold this on the desk for now.
Okay, we'll come back to it. Let's take up the next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item then would be item number 44, and that was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Garcetti on item 44? Questions have been answered? Anything further on item 44?
Ms. Sikowsky. One, I'm just speaking until Mr. Cardenas gets here, this is a matter that Public Safety has approved. It's a major incentive in one of the police divisions with the Explorer Scouts, who's contributed a trailer to help them work better with the police department in terms of the community in their neighborhood. And the police department indicated that it can help set up the trailer and make it work better for the Explorers. It's just one more piece of evidence of outreach and community interaction to help our communities help themselves do better policing with some of these particularly important community programs as they relate to youth.
Okay. If there's no other members wishing to be heard, I don't think Mr. Cardenas will mind disapproving this today. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. That's item 44. Ms. Perry, let me know when we're ready for item 13. Let's proceed to the next item.
Next item is item number 50, and that was called special by Councilmember Sikowsky, and amending motion has been distributed.
Ms. Sikowsky.
If there's no objection, I'd like to take 50 and 51 at this time. These were technical amendments from the Bureau of Engineering on some expenditure funds from a trust fund in CD-11, and it was just correcting the transfer to the right fund so the engineering can do the work for paving some parking lots.
Okay, members, this is items 50 and 51 taken concurrently. Any further discussion on items 50 and 51? Seeing none, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Coming back to item 13. Let's do housekeeping for a minute, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Varegosa requests to be excused Wednesday, November 10th, to arrive at 11:30 for city business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Varegosa is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, December 17th, to arrive at 10:30 for city business, that also meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, November 17th, to leave at noon for city business, that meets council policy.
Excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, November 10th, for city business, that meets council policy.
That excuse is also granted.
And that would clear the desk for item number 13.
Okay, item 13, Ms. Perry.
Eric and I have decided that I'm going to place my foot somewhere on his person, and that we've worked it out.
So what does that mean? We have an amending motion that's been distributed.
That's my amending motion, yes. You caught me off guard, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So are we still moving forward with that?
He always takes a smile, you know. No, I just wanted, the reason that I did the amending motion this morning is to clarify the language listed in his motion on a service repayment, because I had a concern that we had worked a year and a half on addressing this issue and having a number of council districts whose constituents benefited from the Godinez litigation, reach an understanding that they would participate in contributing back to Maldef to reduce their obligation on this building. And I believe that the matter's been resolved, and that CLA and CRA will report back to Housing Committee in two weeks with the recommendations contained in 13A. And with that, I'm satisfied and would ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Reyes.
So for the sake of clarity, when it comes back, we'll have a set of structures, if you will, of how we can proceed forward on this process. Would that be right, Jerry? Okay, just because I was at Combed, I'll make sure we were still there. Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wishing to speak on this item? If not, let's open the roll on the item as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Let's send that item forthwith as well. Madam Clerk, next item.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Colleagues, this is the end of today's agenda. Do we have any announcements?
I have one.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that because of Jack Weiss sort of bringing this to the attention of all of us, I actually, this morning, gave my blood to become part of the registry of bone marrow donors. There is an officer who needs help in the harbor area, the port police. Michael Scotland is battling for his life, and because of you bringing this to our attention, I decided to go down this morning and give blood. Hopefully, anybody that's watching this and lives anywhere close all day today down at the port building at Liberty Plaza, they're hoping that people will come and donate their blood. It's, I won't say painless, but it's a relatively painless procedure, and you might someday save a life. So I would encourage anybody, particularly in San Pedro, Wilmington area, to go and become a donor, and hopefully, we wish our best to Officer Scotland.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, an hour or so ago, I just came back from the incident over at the Mexican consulate, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and praise the LAPD, Chief Brandon and his command staff and how they responded. They're very efficient. They were working with the FBI. The Los Angeles Fire Department also responded. We had a citywide tactical alert, is my understanding. The individual essentially was holding one person hostage upon exiting the building. He was shot, shot in the head, went to the hospital, he's still alive at this point. We don't know what prompted the shooting, but the LAPD right now should be finishing up, going through the building, they're going floor by floor, looking every nook and cranny, making sure there aren't any other dangerous conditions left in the building. And as far as we know, this should be the culmination of what could have been a very tragic incident in the Mexican consulate building, which is in my district. I was able to spend some time with the command staff, and I'm just very proud of our men in red, women in blue, the way they're able to respond to the situation, and everything should have been in control by this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And we were advised of that upon the beginning of council today, and we know that's where you were taking care of business. So thank you for the update. Mr. Ludlow.
I just wanted to publicly commend Councilmember Reyes. His constituents should know that the minute this story broke, I actually called over to his office to try to get ahold of him, and he was already out there dealing with it and was very much on top of it. Just want to compliment you on your leadership, because nobody would like to see that happen in their district or anywhere, but we appreciate your leadership.
Okay, other announcements, members? If there are no further announcements, do we have adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning tributes? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked that we adjourn in memory of Carol Ann Morton, born in New Kensington, Pennsylvania, the oldest of three daughters to Mary and Melvin Morton. She's a graduate of Ohio State University in the area of journalism, received her masters from Columbia, also in journalism. She started her career as a reporter on the Tony Brown Journalism Show in New York. She then moved to Los Angeles in the 1990s, where she became a news writer, KNBC TV Morning News Show today in LA, was later promoted as a producer of the show, then an executive producer. Her dedication, hard work paid off, garnering her a total of three Golden Mike Awards, two Los Angeles Emmys. She also was a member of the First AME Church, a member of the Women in Film, and also the Black Journalists. Funeral service would be held at First AME on Saturday, November 6. She survived by her father and mother and a host of other relatives.
Ms. Resin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. The first one is Christopher Teeter, passed away October 29th. Christopher was born December 5th, 1964, in Illinois, passed away October 29th at the young age of 39. Painter and handyman who resided in Reseda, passed away suddenly in an automobile accident. Warm and happy person, loved sports, music, children, animals, his family and friends. He will be missed by his family and friends. Survived by his mother, Mary Burnett Donaro, brothers Kevin and James, sister Adrian, stepfather Rocco, father Leon, and Linda Teeter, along with many extended family members and close friends. May Christopher Teeter rest in peace. And my second adjourning motion is for Norman Jake Jacoby, passed away November 5th. Norm Jacoby was born August 2nd, 1915, in Vancouver, British Columbia. He moved to Los Angeles in 1922. During World War II, he served overseas in the Army, was one of the staff of the military newspaper Stars and Stripes. Norm Jacoby was a former reporter who covered police in Los Angeles for more than half a century. Worked for various organizations, began in 1935 with a stint at City News Service, worked at the Los Angeles Examiner and the Los Angeles Herald Express before returning to City News Service in 1968. The newsroom at Parker Center Police Headquarters was later named the Norm Jake Jacoby Press Room in his honor. He will be greatly missed by his family and friends. He survived by two daughters, 15 grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. Norm Jake Jacoby, may he rest in peace.
I met him years ago over in the Parker Center Press Room, and he was quite a character, quite a character. Wasn't a tall man, but he was sure tall with the pin and worked so hard to get the news out, what was happening in the police department, and he was quite an interesting man. So I'd like to ask that we all, because he worked so hard to inform the public, second that, Jake Jacoby.
Mr. Varegosa.
Yes, Mr. President, members, I move that we adjourn in memory of Paul Salas, who was born on July 15th, 1915, in Santa Paula, California. Married his wife Julia on October 8th, 1934, and they celebrated their 70th wedding anniversary this year. They had five children, 13 grandchildren, and 30 great-grandchildren. And after retiring, he dedicated his life to community service and helping the people of Elserino. In fact, he served as honorary mayor of Elserino. In fact, he served as honorary mayor of El Surino from 1998 to 2002. He was a member of the Citizens Union for Participation in Housing and Community Development, and he's made many contributions to that great community. He's one of those people that always had your ear and let you know when you were doing something right, and when he needed you to do something different. And we're going to miss him in El Surino and in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Labange.
Members, you may not have known her, but all your seniors knew her. Sue Kelly was with our Department of Aging, and was the one who coordinated so many events for our seniors throughout this city. She was one of those people who worked tirelessly to advance the programs for our senior citizens. Tragically, last Friday, she passed. She was absolutely wonderful city employee, who had great enthusiasm, and I just remember her, just as it was yesterday, at the event they had at the Hollywood Bowl to salute all the mothers and Mother's Day. She truly was a great individual, who was a hard-working city employee. She lived in Mr. Garcetti's district off of the Mariposa, near City College, survived by her husband Tim and her children. Her funeral mass will be this Friday at our Mother of Good Counsel on Vermont Avenue in Las Feliz. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Sue Kelly, a great city employee from our Department of Aging.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other final tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.